Board members, it's two o'clock, so we're going to call this meeting of the Granville County Board of Education for a work session to order. We do have a quorum. Ms. Anderson is on her way. She will be here in a few moments. Ms. LaBrecke will not be with us today, and so we'd like to go ahead and begin our meeting. Mr. Peace, will you begin with the invocation for us?
Sure thing. Thank you. That was Val. Father, we thank thee for giving us another opportunity together to discuss and transact the business of the Granville County Public School System. We ask that you continue to keep us on the right track doing those things that have been pleasing for you and in the best interest of children and parents. These are all things we pray for and ask. Amen.
Dr. McNair, will you lead us in our pledge of allegiance?
Yes. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you so much for being here this afternoon. As we have scheduled this work session, as you see in our agenda there, we will be discussing our budget presentation, and then we'll go into closed session for some items there. First, we'd like to hear if there's any comments or report from our superintendent.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman. I would like to take this opportunity to thank our board members and our public, our educators and our families for joining us for our evening of excellence earlier this week. That was certainly an extraordinary event, and it epitomizes what Granville County Public Schools is all about, a standard of excellence. I then would like to just acknowledge that the work this afternoon is about approving our recommended budget to county commissioners. Our liaisons met with commissioner liaisons on yesterday, and the budget that will be shared with you by our interim finance officer and a representative from the HEAL group is what you have in front of you today. And absolutely nothing has changed since the last time we met. So that is what the action is needed on today. I wanted to share that with you. And finally, this evening at 6:00 PM at Northern Granville Middle School, we will be celebrating our Work Keys students. Those are youngsters who are considered completers. They've taken the ACT Work Keys assessment, and at 6:00 PM, our local business and industry partners will be networking and showcasing their businesses with our students, their families, and anyone else who'd like to show up and come out and meet them. And the program itself will begin at 6:30. So we invite everyone to come out to that at 6:30 PM today. Tons of giveaways for those young people because that is an exciting event as well. So please come out and join us.
All right. Any questions for the superintendent? All right. For my report to you today, I only have one item. I would like to tell those who serve on our policy committee that was formed a couple of meetings ago, we have been requested to review and revise a policy dealing with student tuition and student admission. And so what we have talked about as our group with the NC School Board Association is beginning their work to review all of our policies. We're going to pull this one out. This group will begin to work on it and work with our attorney in seeing if there is any kind of recommendations based off of what has come to us. And so in the next several days, you'll be getting communication from me, those ones who serve on that committee, and we will have a meeting to discuss those revisions. So I just want to make you aware of that. Again, that will go to that committee. Anything that comes out of that committee will come back to the full board, obviously, if there's any changes. Are there any things from board members?
Chairman Richardson, if there are other policies that we feel that might need to be looked at before we go through that whole review with the state association, what's the procedure we need to follow?
So essentially, if you would just refer that to that committee, and they will decide at that point whether they'll take it up or whether it'll be done in the bigger review.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Anything else from other board members? All right. So Ms. Anderson, good to have you. Thank you.
Thank you.
So we are at the point now where we're going to have our 2022-2023 budget presentation. I believe Ms. Hines is here with Mr. Lopes from the HEAL group. And so Dr. McLean, do you have any comments before we begin?
No, we are just pleased to have them with us to present nothing new this evening but to refresh us on today's presentation, and this is the recommendation going forth to our county commissioners as recommended by you. So Ms. Hines.
Very good. I'd like to say that we do have Mr. Hank Heard over Zoom as well.
Is he virtual?
So he will be joining us tonight.
Thank you.
Absolutely. And I'm going to hand it right over to Mr. Lopes.
If we could turn the microphone up at the podium, please. It's just a little low.
We're going to hand, I'm going to hand it right over to Mr. Lopes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Vicky. Good afternoon, board. It's good to be with you all again, this time in person. The, I'm not going to spend a whole lot of time going over details because we've obviously had a couple of meetings before, but I do want to go over this document with you as far as your proposed budget that you're considering for a recommendation to your county commissioners. And so if we could go to page two, just to get started. One thing that we've talked about before, but I do want to mention, the percentage of dollars that are coming from the various sources is a little bit distorted because of the COVID money that's been coming to the district the last two years and will continue through September of '24. So we do put the percentage of funding sources in the budget on here, but just in a couple of years, those numbers are going to change pretty drastically. Historically, the state numbers have been closer to 70%, about 60 to 70%. Of course, now they're all the way down to 45%, and once again, it's because of the influx of federal dollars. So that's, once again, is very unusual for us to have a low percentage of state dollars coming into the budget. If we go to page three, if you look at the second little pie chart in there, one thing I want to bring to your attention, 78% of your dollars that are spent are for instructional services, which is a very good percentage for going directly basically to the classroom, to the school sites. And so the support services are also benefiting the children, but those are your maintenance, your technology, things of that nature. They're just not in the school building on eight hours a day or whatever. So 78% for instructional services is a very, very good percentage. If you go down to the bottom, by expenditure, once again, it's a little bit distorted because of the federal dollars. A lot of the federal dollars are being used for technology, for supplies, things of that nature. So it lessens the percentage of total dollars that are going to salaries. So right now, you see salaries plus benefits is about 70%. Typically, that number's about 85%. So once again, for the next couple of years, these numbers will be a little bit off, but I just want to give you some perspective as to why things are a little bit different now than what they typically are. On page four, once again, this just shows you the same thing, just in a different way, the revenue sources. Sometimes the revenues, for instance, even in local, there could be some federal dollars that are actually in the local budget, just based on the source of the way the money's received. So the revenue may be a little bit different percentage-wise than what you saw on the expenditure side, but anyway, you see over 30% of it's coming from the federal, which once again is very unusual. What I want to spend some time on is the bottom of page four. We've talked about this, but just want to reiterate it. If you look at your allotted ADM, that's the column that the DPI uses to fund the school system. So if you go back four years ago, three now, but four based on the year that we're discussing, you'll see that you were allotted 7,706 students. If you go down to the bottom, you see for the upcoming year, it's almost 1,000 students less. So you're looking about a 15% difference in students that the state is funding. So that has obviously an impact on the school district. Well, one thing that is a little bit hard to put into place now is the fact that we were held harmless for two years. And so what's happening across the state, reality is setting in, and so as the ADM has decreased, all of a sudden, decisions had to be made as to personnel. Because for two years, the state has held them, has held harmless, but now they're saying, okay, now you're going back to your actual. So when you actually get to actual, they're going to reduce your allotments for not just certified positions, but also classified positions. So I just want to bring that to your attention, that you have about a 15% difference in your allotted ADM from four years ago. And I would guess that you don't have a 15% reduction in personnel. Most districts did not take a proportionate decrease in their personnel over the last couple of years. But at some point, that will have to be considered over the next, you know, one to three years. You have the ability now to leverage your ESTR funds to be able to keep the positions, but that's going to run out in September of '24. So not necessarily just for the upcoming budget, but for the next two years, decisions are going to have to be made as to personnel allocations, not only at the school site, but district-wide as to how many you can afford. Okay? So if you go over to the last three years during COVID, if you go to about five columns over where it says actual change, that was just for the three years during the COVID. You see the 726 student difference just in those three years. So once again, the bottom line is the decrease in ADM is going to have an impact on your budget, and that's the case for 99% of the districts in the state. Just about every district is losing ADM with rare exception. Any questions on that? If we go to page five, we see the enrollment graph here, and it looks at charter schools versus your public school enrollment. And so you can see that four years ago, the charter school enrollment was only 1,410. The current year is 1,851, and we just used the same increase that had been from the previous year to estimate for next year, 1,879 charter school students next year. That number obviously is going to be different. It's just an estimate that we used for purposes of putting this together, whereas your numbers have gone down. Okay? So you see that there were 7,396 actually in the system four years ago, and next year you're getting funded at 6,783. So overall, there's not much difference in the total number of students. It's just where they're going. There's still a small 100-plus or so student difference, but as far as the funding for you from the state, it's going down because of the students that you have here as opposed to what's in the charter schools.
Can I ask a quick question?
Yes, sir.
About the charter aspect. If you take Falls Lake and Ox Prep, they're the two school systems that, I mean charter schools that get the largest amount of money. And then Vance Charter really isn't as big a number of students going there as sometimes you think. So if you put those three together, which are the three here, it would be interesting to know, once we have those figures, how many students are left over in terms of the 1851. In other words, I'm sure the three, those three schools do not amount to that 1,800. And it would be interesting to know how many don't in terms of knowing where they're going, which we know there are 35 total. But where they're going and, and I won't say why, but I mean, the point I'm making is that we assume that every kid who doesn't come to school here is going to one of these three charter schools, and they're not. And it'd be interesting to know how, and I know you have a list of that, but to know really what's happening with that group of kids. You know, Vance Charter and those schools, those three schools are here. They've taken a lot of our students. Many of them are beginning to be full. We don't know that for sure, but where are they going and why?
Well, I know that with the survey that we're working on, we'll hopefully find out some of the why. And I know in years past, we've seen that chart of the other charter schools and how many there are.
Yeah. But let's say it's 1,700 students or 1,500 or whatever. That's a big chunk, and you know, they might be.
Okay. I'm just being curious.
May I speak to that? We have, at this point, only of those 1,800, 315 are at charter schools outside of the main three in our area.
How many, 300?
About 300.
That's pretty, that's pretty low. Interesting. Thank you.
I think I mentioned to you all before that you have a lot of charter school options up here that I'm not used to seeing. Where I come from on this side of the state, so we have 35 for a system this size, that's a lot of charter schools that kids have access to. It's obviously hurting your population. If we look at the bottom of that page, we mentioned earlier that you're seeing a reduction in your ADM from the state, and so we estimated that would cost you about $3 million in state funds. And so the estimate is about 16 positions. Just for information purposes, the state has started putting out some information for next year's budget, but the big dollar, the big items are still not out there. And so there's about four or five allotments that they've sent out preliminary information, and they preface that by saying, this is an estimate. It may not be your actual allotment. So we still don't have a good number to use from the state. So when we put these numbers out here, we're estimating based on what we know at this time and based on your ADM compared to the ADM for the rest of the state. So roughly, you would lose 16 certified positions next year off your allotment based on this reduction in ADM. And that's in addition to, and this is once again, just rehashing things that we've talked about, the almost a million dollars, well, it will be over a million now with raises, the positions that were held harmless that you're paying for out of the ESTR funds. And once again, the ESTR funds will run out in two years, so that's going to have to be addressed at some point in the next two years as to how those will be funded or handled.
I have a question. Where are we running as far as kindergarten preregistration compared to last year? About the same, a little above, or a little below?
Do we have that yet, Vicky? Has that come in?
I have not gotten that information yet.
We don't have that. We'll add that to our list to look into and bring it to you in June. Will you add that for me, please?
It's the big unknown statewide. Are kids going to come back into the public schools in the fall, or are they going to continue to migrate to these other options? And so that's going to impact every district. If you get your kindergartners back, then ADM may not be reduced as much as what was anticipated, but that's the big unknown. The big issue that's affecting your budget next year is obviously the salary increases. And I'll summarize it once again without going into a lot of detail, but your certified employees will have an average of a 2.5% increase. So that's a fairly easy one to look at. The big issue is your classified employees. This year, the state required a minimum of $13 an hour. Next year, they're requiring a minimum of $15 an hour. They've already been doing this at the state level for other state agencies. This year, they're including the schools. The difference is that based on our calculations and based on what happened with a $13 an hour minimum, the state is not providing enough money to cover their, our school system employees that are state-funded. And so there's going to be a shortfall between, we're required to pay them 15, but they're not going to give us enough to pay all of them $15 an hour. So and we're used to calling that an unfunded mandate. You don't have any choice. You can't pay them $13 an hour because they didn't give you enough money. You've got to pay them 15. So the big issue is how much is that going to cost? And once again, based on estimates, it's going to either fall back to using other sources of money to pick up the difference, or you'll have to reduce the number of people that are in those positions. So the $15 a minimum sounds good, but that impacts those that have been here for a while that may already be at the 15, or even if they're not at 15, you know, they're making 14 something an hour right now. They're going to go get a minimal raise, but your beginning people are going to go all the way to $15 an hour. Back in 2008, 2009, the minimum salary at the state level was 1070 an hour. So it took 12 years to get that minimum to $13 an hour, which was this year. It was only 1166 a year ago. So from 2008, 2009 to the 2021 school year, the minimum went up 96 cents an hour. Okay? Think about how many years that is, 96 cents an hour. But then in one year, it jumps up to $13 an hour, and the following year, it goes up to 15. So we've already said that the state is not covering their share, but just think what the impact is on the local, which is what we're talking about today. So from a local standpoint, you'd have to have the resource to be able to pay those employees the $15 an hour. With the school boards, you don't have any taxing authority. I like to say we're professional beggars, right? Because, you know, we beg for federal, state, and local money, and we don't know what we can spend until after the fact.
And we're just going hungry.
Yes.
Because we're just not doing a good job of raising.
I don't remember the last thing I read about it, but it was quite a few billion dollars more expected in revenue in our state. What's the odds that that might go to our school systems?
That's been the same story for how many years now?
Yeah.
How many years in a row?
Welcome to the school board comedy hour.
Yeah. Exactly.
And that gets back to, the reason why I gave you those numbers on the hourly rates, if things had been done gradually the last four or five years, to get into the 15 would not have been as drastic as it is now, as much of an impact on your local budget. And if you're raising something 2%, 3%, 4% a year, that's a lot different than having to raise salaries 15% in one year. But that person, that group of employees that just got moved to 13, they're going to go up another 15 and 1/2% in one year. And the majority of your employees that are classified are impacted by the $15 an hour. That's your bus drivers, your TAs, your custodians. So that's the big dollar amount to get them to 15, but then the compression, I did an example for another school system and went back to 2008, 2009, because that was the year, you know, of the Great Recession when it started. And a person at the lowest end of the scale, at that point, I'm sorry, at the lowest pay grade, that had 28 years' experience, was making $13 an hour. I wanted to use $13. Now, assuming they were still working, they'd be at 42 years' experience, okay? And they still wouldn't be at $15 an hour until this state minimum goes up. And so a person's going to come in tomorrow, I mean, July 1, they're going to be making $15 an hour. This person that, in our example, the example I used for the other school system, they're going to be making $15 an hour because the state hasn't given raises consistently over the last 14 years to classified employees. And it's all coming to a head. It's all happened at one time. So all that being said, what's the impact on Granville County schools? So if we turn the page, every request that's on here relates to salary. Okay? I think that was an initiative that the administration decided was the most important, was to look at the salaries for its employees. Without employees, you don't have a school system. Obviously, you have students, but you want to have employees that are happy to be here and feel like they're being valued and paid decently, not necessarily paid more than other school systems, but at least paid for what they're worth. And so if we look at some of these totals here, basically, and there's, when you look at continuation versus expansion, there's a fine line between what's continuation and what's expansion. To me, all of this is continuation because basically you're keeping the same number of employees, but you're wanting to compensate them adequately. But from terms, terminology of it's more money than what you've been getting, some of it could be considered to be an expansion. So it's really just semantics, but what we have here, we broke it down between continuation and expansion, but from a request standpoint, I would probably say that it's all continuation. So the 130,000 is for your local employees to meet that minimum, the $15 an hour or the 2.5%. Most of your employees are not locally paid, and the ones that are locally paid are not at that low end of the, they're not your TAs for the most part, they're not your bus drivers. So they're not at that low end of the scale. So that part of it is not, does not have as much of an impact as the compression does. So that's why the number's not quite as big when you see the 130. Retirement rate's going up again. Health insurance is going up again. And so there's a reserve at the bottom of 200,000 for what we think the shortfall will be from the state unless they're able to put some more money in there to pay the classified employees. I actually have the opportunity to meet with some legislators back in my home district next Monday to go over the issue with them, because I really don't think they know. I mean, that's kind of getting in the weeds from their standpoint, so I really don't know that they know that there's not enough money out there to cover that. So at least making the effort to try to let them know this is a statewide issue that they may want to take back to the leadership. The expansion, which once again, you could call it continuation, we've got it as expansion on here, is for the compression. And so the compression, obviously, is going to be very significant because you've got grades that have compressed steps of many years, 13, 14 years. It's going to take quite a bit to differentiate between each year of experience along those grades. So the capital budget is not as, there's a designated funding source for that, so that's not as big of an issue. Your operating budget is the one of concern. But we also have to remember, we talked about the impact of charter schools, but every dollar you ask for, a proportionate amount needs to go to charter schools. So whatever your ask is, another amount needs to be added so that you're really getting what you need, since you have to give a portion of it to charter schools. So that's the $408,000 number. So that's the four hundred and eight thousand dollar number.
Hank, just, uh, so I keep harping on this because I'm trying to understand it and I'm a little slow. Um, so every do, every dollar that we get from, that we ask for, the, the charters get twenty-five, you know, twenty-five percent of the stuff. So when a commissioner stands up and says, or says, why do they keep asking for more and more money when the enrollment is going down? The reality is, the money we're asking for is the total enrollment.
Yes.
That has been stable for years. So we've got to figure out a way to be able to get that through to them if they're interested in.
Well, there's been misstatements that a certain percentage always goes to Granville County Schools, what it does, but then a percentage of that off the top goes to our charter schools. They need to understand, and I think a majority of them understand, that they are funding children of Granville County, not Granville County Public Schools.
That's so important.
Yeah. And, and that's not just nomenclature to make us feel better. They are funding every kid in the, in the county to go to a school. We have a certain percentage of them, charter schools have another percentage of them.
So, so, um, for example, we're dealing with all of these fifteen dollar an hour things. So are the charters required to, to do the same thing?
Based on what I could read, it said state-funded entities must meet the fifteen dollar an hour minimum. So I took that to mean that the charter schools do too. Now, that doesn't mean there's not some fine print somewhere, but the part that pertained to the fifty dollar hour minimum said if there, of those funded, you know, by the state, so I, I took that to mean the charter schools also.
But low, okay, all right. The point I'm making is, the point I'm making now, I promise this, uh, is that when we ask for the money for those positions, you know, the fifteen dollar, if it impacts charters, then the point is that they're involved with this just as much as we are. So it's, uh, you know, a hundred thousand dollars, and twenty-five thousand goes to the charters who have the same thing, so it, anyway.
Well, we've always said that unfortunately, our superintendent has to be the chief fundraiser for all students. Charter schools get the benefit of that when they're held to that standard as well.
One thing, they don't have as many classified positions to deal with. I don't think they have a whole lot of bus drivers, based on my knowledge.
Correct. So if we go to page eight, there's a summary there, which is basically what your ask is going to be from, well, what you're considering to ask from, um, from the county. This hasn't changed, um, since we did our initial presentation. You're to be commended for having, you know, the meetings that you've had since that time to consider the budget and talk things through, and maybe look at some long-term issues as well as some short-term issues as it relates to, um, to funding. So, uh, what you have here is your, um, your ask from the, uh, from the county, and so including the capital outlay, it's about twenty point eight million. But of course, not, some of that is capital outlay, which gets it down to a little over nineteen million for the, um, for the current expense, uh, portion. Um, you can see we call that one item unfunded state mandate as opposed to, um, expansion on the, on the last page. But, um, that is, uh, once again, since we've gone over the detail, I'd just try to summarize the presentation today, but I'd be glad to answer any questions that you have, or try to.
Board members, um, yesterday at our liaison meeting, this is what was presented to our liaisons and our county manager that we were bringing to you so that they were aware of what to expect unless you made any kind of changes today. Uh, but this does come to you as an action item today. Uh, if you have questions for Mr. Lopes, he's here to answer those, and if not, then we need to entertain action on this as an item.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question.
Yes, sir. Can you, uh, move your mic a little closer?
Oh, yeah. Uh, my question has to do with the funding that we, uh, asked for, because we only asked for, for us, we only get about seventy-five percent of what we asked for, about that, right?
Yes.
Say that again.
The funding that we asked the county for, actually, the public school will get about seventy, seventy-five percent, and the charters get the other.
Yes, sir.
So why don't we ask for it like that?
Well, I, I think in, in a way, we s, we do. We, we do break it out for them so that they see what the charter school piece is.
I'm not talking about for them, I'm talking about for them in the public.
Um.
So, so if our budget said, in simple terms, we asked for a hundred thousand dollars, instead of asking for a hundred, we asked for seventy-five for us and twenty-five for them, I mean publicly.
Break it down. I mean, that could definitely.
Because, I, I mean, we.
Be done in the budget document.
I mean, it might be kind of late for us to, to put that in this budget document that we have here now, I don't know that, but it seems like we should, uh, ask for what we are going to use for our public school children. And, uh, we can justify doing that, but when it comes to the twenty-five percent that goes to the charters, how do we justify what they do with?
Absolutely. And I think the increase for charter schools, the way it's listed here, I think we can, but we can kind of state them all. And I think state them all, but I mean, just.
Sorry about that, I was talking to Vicky to see if we were talking about what your concern was.
That's right.
I think without too much difficulty, we could add on that last page, based on estimates, because we don't know the actual numbers until the year starts.
Right.
We can say that here, our total ask is this much, here's how much would go to charters, here's how much would go to Granville Public Schools, and it would still be the total, but it'd be based on our estimates that we had on a previous page, estimated charter schools over the, um, and the, uh, Granville Public Schools amount. We could prorate the ask, and I, I think without too much difficulty, if that's what the board would desire, and I think that we could add it to the last page without changing the essence of the, um, of the budget.
That's right.
But, but you know, it sort of goes down to what, uh, Tom was talking about a minute ago. You know, we get, we get the hit for it.
Mm-hmm.
Asking for all this money.
Mm-hmm.
And when we talk about not having enough to pay for what we need to do, uh, we get hit for that too.
Mm-hmm.
And, and I just think, we just, I don't mind getting the hit for what's mine, but I don't need to get a hit for what's theirs.
Right.
Would you be willing, go ahead.
Well, I want to interject because I was looking something up. You asked earlier if charter schools are required to pay the fifteen dollars, and I think the answer is no.
Okay, good.
Because what the budget bill said is that the state board must change its pay scale to have this at the bottom, but charter schools don't have to be on the pay scale.
Wow.
So that's just some quick research, but that's what it looks like.
Imagine that.
Which is all the more reason why I just said, I, I think exactly what you've described would be most helpful for the public to understand, here is our portion of the ask, we still have to reflect, this is what will pass through to charters, and you have a column for increase, but a paragraph or something to explain would be most helpful.
So with the base for the charter schools.
Maybe just seeing the overall budget of it so that they're understanding that we're asking for this before, I mean, a increase, but how many millions of dollars are we passing through?
That's right.
That doesn't say.
So I think a separation out would be in order, if that is the pleasure of the board.
Would you like, or are you prepared to make a motion to that effect with the budget?
I am if I, if the superintendent be good enough to tell me what I'm, what I've said, how to put it into a motion. I mean, I, I know what we want to happen, uh, but I want it motioned in a way that everybody can understand where, where I'm going with this.
Absolutely.
So I believe it's approving the budget as presented with the change of including a breakout of the increase for charters and explaining the pass-through to charters in the budget document.
Sounds like I said it myself. Thank you. I'll make that motion.
One second.
One second while I write all this stuff that down that you said.
Thank you.
All right, so we have a motion by Mr. Peace and a second by Dr. McKnight to approve the budget as presented with an explanation in the budget document to explain charter pass-through and to show the increase over this year. So we have a motion and a second. Do we have any further discussion?
Yeah, um, the part about what we're required to do by the state as opposed to them not being required, I'm not saying they're not going to do it, I don't know what they're doing, because I don't really know, but we are required.
So in that budget document, you're asking that we include the unfunded mandate language.
Mm-hmm.
Okay? Are the two gentlemen okay with adding that to your motion?
I'm fine with it. I'm fine with it. It's going to make a difference.
All right. Any further discussion or questions? All right, so we have a motion on the floor to approve the budget as presented, including an explanation of the budget pass-through and the unfunded mandate of the fifteen dollar an hour minimum wage in the budget document. It's been motioned by Mr. Peace and a second by Dr. McKnight. If you're ready to vote, all those in favor of this, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed. All right, this, uh, budget passes six to zero, and that will go on to our county commissioners in the next day, and, uh, they will, uh, receive this and be ready to start their work on it. Mr. Lopes, Ms. Hines, thank you so much for your work on all that.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
We can call him now, the green, the grim reaper is leaving. Don't take us with you.
Don't take it personally, so that anybody that comes with budget. All right, board, at this moment, we'd like to entertain a motion to adjourn to closed session in accordance with North Carolina General Statute one forty-three, three eighteen, eleven, A six, A three, A five, in section one fifteen C three twenty-one for personnel and attorney-client privilege. Do we have someone to make that motion?
So moved.
We have a motion by Ms. Anderson and a second by, by Mr. Peace. Is there any further discussion? All right, all those in favor of this motion, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, we're now in closed session. Let's take about a five-minute break and then we'll cut back.